Good evening. If you could all please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We will start the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Welcome, everyone. We're going to start the evening out with some recognitions. And I'm going to read this because Amy Belding has the longest title in the entire district. If you'd please welcome Amy Belding, Career in Technical Education, Choice Programs in Global Studies and World Languages Coordinator, to the podium for the recognition of the International Exchange Program Partner Organizations.
All right. My daughter was playing with this earlier, so I'll make sure it's all functioning. All right. Thank you so much for having me here and welcoming our students. The Parkway School District actively promotes international understanding and a global awareness among young people from this country and other countries by hosting exchange students. It has been said that relationships are the thread that builds community. When you take that to a global scale by encouraging our young leaders to foster these connections, you enhance the learning environment and build lifelong bonds, lasting relationships and family connections. We are here to recognize those students, their families, the organizations, and the administrations that have made this possible. Thank you for having us. We're going to start with our students that are traveling here with our partner organization, AFS. So students, when I call your name, if you can come up and shake hands with Dr. Marty, Ms. Stover, our board members, and then you're going to stand over here, and then at the end of each organization, we'll recognize that organization and the partners' host families as well. Our first student is Alessandra Russo, a junior from Italy and is traveling here with Our next student is Saleem Osman from Turkey, a junior also here from AFS. Our next student is Simon Wolf from Germany, a junior from AFS as well. Our next student is Penelope Laporte from France. She is a junior with AFS. Next, we have Aim Akapalangi from Thailand, also traveling with AFS. Next, we have Zi Hang Shen from China with AFS. Rachel Lippman from Bangladesh is our next student. Next, Koharu Harashima from Japan. And if we could just have all of the families and partners of AFS please stand, I'd like to recognize them and their dedication to hosting these students for one whole year. Thank you. Thank you very much. Do we forget somebody? Oh, is it, are you Alyssa? I didn't see you come in. Yay, I had you on my list. Next, we have Alyssa Rose Poe from Australia, and I will be going there in 2020. Thank you so much for being here. I didn't see you sneak in. Awesome. Thanks, guys. All right. The next organization that we partner with is YFU. Our first student traveling with YFU is Leandro Costa from Brazil. Next, we have Alisa Koberstein from Germany with YFU. Next, we have Lucas, and I'm not going to even attempt your last name because I'm going to butcher it. I'm going to let you come say it. From Germany. Come say your last name.
Sanjohanza.
Oh, come here. You're adorable.
Sanjohanza.
Sanjohanza, from Germany. Thank you. And if we could just have all of our partners with YFU please stand, host families. We've really developed a strong relationship with them. And I would like to mention from YFU, Stephen Rutherford is a big proponent, and then also James Butler from AFS are here. They've really been wonderful partners with us. We appreciate that. The next organization that we partner with is CIEE, and we have Musamel Umar from Pakistan. And I believe that is our last student. We have one more? I would like to say that over the past three years, we have really encouraged not only the students that we have been accepting into Parkway, but also our students that we're sending abroad, as well as expanding our global competency program or providing more overseas travel opportunities. We also have a global competency cohort running for our second year with teachers in Parkway that we're helping them to build their global competency, empathy, multiple perspectives. So we just really appreciate your support. It wouldn't be possible without the board's help. I'd also like to recognize Dr. Tim McCarthy and Dr. Daryl Diggs from South and Central High, who are, did we lose Tim? See? Oh, he's back there. Dr. Tim McCarthy from Central and Daryl Diggs from South High for their support. And unable to be here, Dr. Jeremy Mitchell and Dr. Tori Kane from North and West High. So again, thank you so much, students. Soak up everything that you can here. If you need anything, we are here to support you. Parkway is a community, it's a family, and we're so happy to welcome you here. We appreciate you taking the risk on us, and we look forward to the lifelong bonds that you'll form with our students and our families. So thank you so much. Good? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all for joining us tonight. We will take a brief, about a five-minute break, and then we will continue with the meeting.
Can I, can I just add one thing? I just think Amy Belding has done such a wonderful job. I just appreciate Amy, all the work you've done, and you're building, I think, just such a great relationship, not only continuing the programs we've had, but just the work you're doing here to make sure that we are thinking differently about our, our future. You know, and students, we're just so happy you're here, and we just hope you have a great year and do form lifelong friendships. I hear stories oftentimes of people that get together 25 or 30 years after they've had this experience. I think that's just wonderful. So thank you, and thank you, all you adults who support these, these programs. It's vital in the world we live in, in the future of our world, if you think about relationships and building world peace and cooperation, and we continue these kind of programs. So thank all of you. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. All right. We will now continue the meeting. 6.0, 6.01 addition of Agenda Item 10.23, Annual Renewal License for Nutrition Services Management System. 7.0 Citizen Statements. Tonight, we have none. 8.0 Approval of Agenda. May have a motion in a second to approve the agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of Education scheduled for October 17, 2018. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Next regular board meeting will take place on Wednesday, November 14, 2018, beginning at 7:00 PM, right here at Central Middle School. An anticipated closed session will be held at 6:00 PM. Board Liaison Reports.
All right, I'll start. For October 9, we have a meeting with the organizing of the GLLAS committee, and it was a very meeting that had, you know, really good time to walk through on what is planned for the next few years, and, you know, that can be right away, so there needs to be a lot of planning and progression. And, uh...
So I will not go in the details because otherwise Kevin will not like me to disclose that, so. But he's planning a really cool pilot, especially focused on personalized learning. Thank you. And then we had, you know, he's also working towards grading system, which would, you know, another thing, but I won't talk in the details because I would let Kevin do all the pilot and research before we even go in that route. But a lot of great things happening at Parkway. Lot of new changes are coming. Always changes, sometimes, you know, people don't like, but it's, it's necessary for us to move forward in the right direction. So thanks to Kevin for all you do and the team. I appreciate that. And then we had a Project Parkway meeting on Monday, which mostly we talked about the bond, upcoming bond, and the safety features. We had some SROs come and talk to us, and actually, we had an intruder drill at South High. So, you know, there's, there's a lot of things that's happening in terms of security, especially in this kind of environment, which is very important for us and our students. So we are definitely working to keep the best on that one. We also have double-door entry for most of our elementary schools, and with the bond, we would be able to get for the remaining schools. So just wanted to give you guys an update on that. So thank you for that. Kevin?
Thank you. So I've had a busy month with Parkway activities, but this is kind of the, the real fun part of this position for me, is being able to attend lots of different things and see all the great stuff, the district, that's going on in the district. I took my six-year-old and three-year-old to the Parkway West Music Showcase, and they did about as well as a six-year-old and three-year-old could be expected to do, but they got some culture, and it was a really impressive night. The orchestra director there, Edson Heidrich, actually was my next-door neighbor growing up, and he invited us, and it was really great to see what they were doing. What that night was, was essentially one song by each of the different divisions of the music department there, which this early in the school year was a pretty impressive feat to pull off, and it was smooth and really, really great. This week, Kristy and I attended the Parkway Early Childhood Trivia Night, and I don't see anyone, I don't see anyone who was there, so I can pretend that we won.
First place.
But it was a really great event, and the Parkway Early Childhood staff was really, really involved. And of all the trivia nights I've been to, this was probably the most enjoyable, the good categories, good pace, and it seems like they made a lot of money for the program. Couple weeks ago, along with some of the other individuals up on the board, we were able to attend the Missouri School Board Association Conference at Tantera. There was, and I'm sure others will discuss this, but the opportunity to go to some great seminars and learn about what some of the other districts around the state are doing in some ways that we can be better at doing our jobs. Bill Bradley was the speaker on Friday, who was very impressive, and since I don't think my wife watches this on the stream, I could say that he tells jokes the same way my wife does, where he tells the joke, gets to the punchline, and then remembers the part of the joke he left out, inserts it right before the punchline. And finally, I was also able to attend a couple of Parkway Central football game, a Parkway North homecoming football game over the weekend, and those are always just real fun events to go to. So that was me this month.
Okay. I think you all have both covered everything I went to, so good job. We do have upcoming HR and Finance Subcommittee meetings and Student Services Subcommittee meetings in the next month, month and a half, so we'll have reports on those coming up from those of us on those committees.
In addition to the TLA Subcommittee meeting that I attended with Sue Dear and Matt, and the music ensemble that I went to also with Kevin, and some football games, I also attended the Spark Pitch Competition last Monday evening. This is a competition where our Spark students pitch their ideas that they have been working on with the mentors over, over the semester period of time, and actually receive a $500 award for, from Maryville University for winning their pitch competition. So it was a lot of fun. I had never attended one of those before, and it was just very impressive to see the students speak and argue their cases and ask questions from the judges. So I very much enjoyed that evening, and, you know, just congratulations to the team that, that did win for that. The other thing that I just would like to mention at our last Governing Council meeting for the Special School District is to, we have parent advisory committees at locals, at every local school, just about, and there's also Parent Advisory Committee at the district level. And we would just like to encourage more parents who have students of disabilities or utilizing the Special School District Services to become involved in those parent advisory committees. It's important that we hear what some of the challenges are, what some of the good things are that are going on between the Special School District and our, our district. And it's important that we have more parent volunteers there because not everybody's able to make those meetings, given the special needs of their own children. So it's important that we kind of expand and, and open up more people that are involved in those, so that we always have attendance at our, at our local school meetings and at the district level meetings as well. So everyone is attended to, to those. I just encourage you to reach out to your local schools and find out who the contact is to participate in those meetings.
All right. Not to repeat whatever I was just saying, I will just give one thought that I had from the School Board Conference we went to, and the fact that, I've said before that I've been more impressed with Parkway, now that I've gotten to know the systems and the processes and the people, but I think than going to the conference at, like at the Ozarks, the fact that as a board member and as a board, we need to be more proactive on promoting public schools in general, instead of enough of public schools in general, that's not just Parkway, but for the whole state, because there are issues out there that not necessarily might affect Parkway, but they are going to affect public schools. And I think we need to make sure our voice is a little bit louder on those issues going forward, and it was very eye-opening for me just to see the breadth of sizes and efforts and programs at the other schools. So it was a great experience for me.
I've been gone off and on the last month and kind of incapacitated with a sciatic problem, so I have not been able to go to very much, but I am looking forward to the Finance, HR Committee. Haven't been on that committee, so I'm looking forward to working with you all on that.
And I, I too have shared a lot of these experiences that you've heard about. One of the things that Debbie mentioned was the pitch competition, and it's, it's just always fascinating to see the ideas that our kids come up with each year, and this year, they've changed the way those teams are, are put together. They actually took a DISC assessment to match kids up with, with different other kids, and it's, it's kind of early to, to tell whether or not that's a good move, but we all think it is. And so it was always, it was kind of cool to see how that plays out. Kevin and I also attended the PTO Leadership Meeting a couple of weeks ago, and that was great to be in a room with a lot of our PTO leaders from across the district and hear what's going on in their schools, and, and hear them kind of talk amongst themselves about, about how to, how to do things differently, or try different ideas that are working for other schools, and so it's always great to, to hear that, that communication. This past weekend, our Citizens for, Paul, what's the name of it, Citizens for the Parkway Community began the official walking community outreach of our bond campaign, and I got to be a part of that and knocked on about 75 doors on Saturday and met some people, and kind of spread the word about what we're asking the community to support the bond issue about. And so that was, that was a great experience. That'll be continuing on, and if you're interested in helping that committee, I'm sure Mr. Tandy can put you in touch with them. And then kind of along that line of, of reaching out to the community, we did something, we started something last month called Board Chat, where we provide an opportunity outside of this formal setting for the community, citizens at large, parents, teachers, volunteers, everyone who's interested in coming and sitting down with a few board members and just talking about things that are on their mind, whether it's suggestions, critiques, ideas, praise, anything. We, we always love to hear what's going on in the community from parents and, and teachers and students' point of view, and so we're going to have another one of those Tuesday, October 30th at 7:00 PM. It's going to be at the Bread Co. at The Wedge in DePere. There should be something in the next day or so on the, on the school website, if it's not already out there, but you'll start seeing it shared in social media, and encourage you to attend that. And like I said, it's, it's whatever anybody wants to talk about. We're there for an hour or two and try and be as, as open as we can. So I don't think I have anything else. Well, Dr. Marty and I spoke or attended the Government Relations Committee today, and that was a great opportunity to get together with a lot of our legislators from across the district, and it was a very diverse group of legislators that were there, and they're representatives. And the one thing that, that I took away is that everybody is on the same page with regard to public education. They really want to see the public school systems succeed in the state of Missouri, and we were represented, obviously, Pattonville was there, and Special School District was there as well. And so it was great to collaborate with everyone and talk about ways that we can improve public education in Missouri. And today is Missouri Day in Missouri, so Happy Missouri Day.
Well, I would just add to that, the meeting today, I, it was, it was hopeful. It seems like things are really improving in terms of the relationship of going on in Jefferson City with a new governor, and that was encouraging to hear that there's a new climate, a new sense of cooperation, and a sense that we're going to have people working together. Although everybody's, you know, waiting for the elections to come and go, but I think, you know, I think we're going to have pretty much the same structure of, of what we have in, in the Missouri structure now in terms of parties, but I think we will, I think we'll see a sense of greater cooperation and people trying to get on the same page on some really important issues, so. I felt really good about that meeting today. I agree with, with Jeff.
Can I just add one thing, since we talked about this earlier, but on our, on the ballot for our bond issue, the Parkway bond issue is the very last item on the ballot, so if you don't want to go through the entire ballot, at least get to the last one, please.
Start at the bottom.
So just because it's a very long ballot, we've been talking about that and voter fatigue, and so if there are just certain things that you want to pick and choose on voting for, we're the very last item on there to vote for.
Okay. Thank you all. As was mentioned, the next TLA Subcommittee meeting was just held Tuesday, October 9th at ISC. Project Parkway meeting was also mentioned, was just held this past Monday, October 15th at Central High. Our upcoming Subcommittee Meetings will be Tuesday, October 23rd at 4:30 will be our Finance Subcommittee Meeting. That'll be just down the road here at the Administrative Center. And then on Thursday, October 25th at 4:30 PM, our Student Services Subcommittee will be held at ISC. 10.0 Action Items. May I have a motion to approve the... May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented in the October 17th, 2018 Board Materials?
So moved.
Second.
Is there anything to be pulled to action or closed? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries 7-0. 11.0 action items, we have none. 12.0 policy review, we have none. 13.0 reports, we have a 2018 summer school report. So if I could have Dr. Jennifer Stanfield come join us, she's the Director of Choice Programs. Good evening.
Good evening. Make sure this is on. Must be a lot taller than the other people that sit here tonight. Good evening, President Todd, Vice President Sortino, Members of the Board, Dr. Marty and Ms. Stover. My name's Jennifer Stanfield, and as Mr. Todd said, I serve Parkway as the Director of Choice Programs, and I'm excited to share with you the highlights from our 2018 summer school program. The summer school program is dependent on collaboration and work throughout many departments and individuals in Parkway. And I would like to thank Ms. Marian Londa, who has since retired from our office, and Ms. Lisa Bangert, who have been my assistants and worked tirelessly to support the work of Parkway Summer School. In addition, I'd like to thank all of our summer school site administrators, teachers, support staff, and others who helped us serve our students throughout the months of June and July. And lastly, I'd like to acknowledge the Parkway Rockwood Community Education Team, who continues to be a resource for our online registration system. After careful review of feedback from parents and families, administrators, and others who were involved in the 2017 summer school program, the following opportunities emerged as areas of focus or consideration as we planned for 2018. That was improving the online registration system for our K-8 summer programming, ensuring guaranteed middle school summer course offerings district-wide, and then expanding our virtual course offerings at the high school. As we proceed through tonight's presentation, I'll share an overview of 2018 summer school, followed by the work and impact of these three focus areas, and then we will conclude with considerations for 2019. This summer, 5,856 total students participated in academic credit recovery, enrichment, or remedial student, and summer programming throughout the Parkway School District, grades K through 12. This was a slight decrease of about 217 students from 2017. In addition, we had more than 1,400 students who participated in our afternoon camps, and we also had 650 students who participated in our half-day and full-day Camp Fantastic camps that are offered at Green Trails, which some people call the Green Trails Camp. It's been around for a really long time. So over 2,000 kiddos participating in those camp opportunities. I'm pleased to share some of the following statistics related to this year's programming. This summer, Mad Math and Science and Summer Sports Fun saw increases in student enrollment across all of our K-8 summer sites. In addition, our Maryville College Admissions Program had 167 participants during both the June and July session combined, which was a slight increase. 62% of our high school students achieved a letter grade of either an A or an A-, in their credit-bearing courses, and we had 19 students who were able to graduate as a result of their summer school courses and the credits earned. Unfortunately, our total average daily attendance in 2018 did drop from 89.1% to 87.5%. That decrease in average daily attendance resulted in an increased district investment in summer school of approximately $14,000 from 2017 to 2018. Actually, in 2016, which you may remember was the last year that we collected supply fees, our attendance was 91%. So 91% to 87%, 87 and a half in three years, is definitely something that we are going to be paying close attention to as we prepare for 2019. So improving the online registration process for K-8 families was first and foremost as we began planning for 2018. As you might remember, on the day that summer school online registration opened in 2017, the Elio system could not keep up and went down for approximately 18 incredibly long minutes. Once the program was back up, the interest then exceeded the number of seats available. We had many students on wait lists, many frustrated parents, and students who were unable to get into summer courses. To ensure there were ample seats for students in 2018, we started providing our summer administrators with different data pieces to look at as they began planning for their site. So each site received a report that showed the number of students enrolled in the previous year, as well as which courses were offered, how many sections, how many students were in those sections, and then they were asked to plan for a 10% increase within their building for that summer. And we coupled that with clearly communicating through our communications with families that all available seats would be open for registration on February 15th. You know, the previous year, we had to add things later, and so there was a lot of waiting, and so we wanted people to know that if they were unable to get a seat, that unfortunately, pretty much every seat was, was open at that point, because we do have facility, you know, limitations as well in terms of how many kiddos we can have, and especially in our PE and some of those high-demand courses. Following 2017, Parkway Rockwood Community Ed worked closely with us, as well as Elio, to conduct a number of calls with the program to really kind of identify some key issues and plan for improvement in 2018. So we were able to improve the online registration experience by allowing access to the Elio system for all summer administrators and administrative assistants. So they were able to get in and actually see what people were registering for, see where there might be errors, and could move students around. Prior to doing that, we were trying to manage that centrally from our office in Parkway Rockwood Community Ed, and in 2017, there were a lot of calls to field, and so we felt like we weren't serving our families. And so this was also a little bit easier because our site administrators, who knew those families, were able to have those conversations. We also added general wait lists by class period versus course wait lists. And through that process, parents could easily mark their preferences for students, and so should a seat come available, we were able to very quickly move a student into that seat versus calling, leaving a message, finding out if they were interested, and then there was a lot of holding in 2017. The other thing that we had that was a challenge in 2017 was that our health information, there was not ways to collect that information via the online summer registration system. And so this year, we worked with Elio to embed some conditional questions, which allowed us to integrate those health forms into the online registration system. And lastly, we staggered our registration times so that we didn't have every family in Parkway logging on at the same time, and we did that by level in an effort to prevent the system from overloading, and the system remained strong throughout the day, which we were very proud of, because we did a lot of work to plan for that. So the other thing that we decided that we would do following summer school 2017 was look at guaranteeing middle school courses district-wide. In 2016, our elementary schools came together and said it would be great if we could offer some of the same courses at every single school, and that we could have that curriculum prepared for teachers. And so we decided to do the same thing last year, and we had our middle school administrators and curriculum coordinators come together to determine a consistent set of courses to be offered. Curriculum coordinators worked with teachers to develop those courses, develop materials and supplies lists, and we were able to offer 19 courses at the middle schools, at all three middle schools. And as we reviewed our client survey feedback, there was a lot of enthusiasm around all of those courses. So we were excited, we were excited by those outcomes. The last area of focus for us was looking to expand our virtual courses at the high school level. We do have some limitations in what we can offer, because it is very difficult to package a year-long course in the summer, but we were able to add three additional courses in 2018. Foundations of Video Game Design, Sociology, and AP Art History Semester II. Those are a little bit more separate, so it was easy to do that. And in addition, our Health and Personal Finance continued to be offered. This table is a little bit difficult to see, but it does show you the data just around virtual enrollment at the high school level last year. As you can see, we had an increase of 44 students who enrolled in virtual classes in 2018. There was also an increase of number of students who enrolled in virtual only, so who opted not to do any seated classes, and we saw a slight decrease in the number of students who decided to do both. Students are able, if they wish, to take two seated classes and an additional virtual. It's a lot, but we do have some students that opt to do that, but it seems as though we had several students that, that really had an increased desire to just do virtual courses. We did see 110 high school students enroll in 171 courses through Grand View's Virtual Summer School Program, which is open to students in the state of Missouri, and in most cases, the students enrolling in those courses enrolled because those courses either weren't offered in person in Parkway, or they weren't offered virtually through the summer school Upon conclusion of summer school, feedback was gathered from internal and external stakeholders, including a K-8 client survey that we conducted for the first time this year from our families. We also have been examining best practices of summer programming in other districts within and beyond the St. Louis area and even Missouri. From that feedback, the following key focus areas has been identified for 2019. We are going to look to expand opportunities for teacher leaders to serve as administrative interns in summer school. Last year, towards the end of the school year, I had a conversation with Amy Gerking-Cotes, who facilitates a Future Leaders in Parkway group, and it was a little late in the game, so a lot of them had already committed to teaching summer school, but we had several that volunteered to come in and kind of learn with that administrator alongside that administrator. And just having that other set of eyes and other individual there to help, which seemed to be really, really well-received from our administrators, as well as the folks who took part in that internship appreciated that experience. We also are going to be reducing our high school summer sites from three seated summer sites to two. Based on our enrollment numbers, it made the most sense to combine West and South in one site and North and Central in another, beginning in 2019. As a result of that, we're also going to be reconfiguring our middle school summer site partnerships, again based on summer enrollment. So Northeast Middle, Central Middle, South, Southwest Middle, and then West Middle is large enough at this point to stand alone as a summer site. Lastly, we want to improve the virtual course registration process. We blended it together, but we have a lot of students that put Personal Finance, Virtual, Personal Finance, Health, Virtual, Health. And so we almost need to kind of place those virtual students before we place those seated students. And so we have a kickoff meeting with our high school administrators tomorrow to kind of put some processes and procedures in place for that. And then the last thing that we will be talking about with all levels of summer administrators is how we can really develop some strategies to improve our summer school attendance. That is a really important piece, and although we, you know, share with parents if they call, whether or not, you know, and ask whether or not a student can participate for a week versus three weeks, we always say that the intent of the program is for people to attend the duration, but really, once summer school starts, how can we continue to get kids there? And we also will be looking at how we can improve communication between summer school sites and families. So some of our feedback suggested that parents would just like more communication on what their kids are learning, more feedback from teachers, and also just, especially for our families who are attending summer sites that aren't their own home school, you know, just things like, what is pickup and drop-off going to look like? What is that shuttle system going to look like? So we will be out of our office putting together some templates that can be utilized district-wide, just so we're all on the same page moving forward. As I conclude tonight's presentation, I want to once again thank all of you for your support. I know many of you walked with me and Dr. Marty this summer as we visited a lot of our summer programming. We're fortunate to have the opportunity to offer such a comprehensive summer learning program for our families, and we're committed to consistently seeking feedback and improving and enhancing our current program, and really trying to allow our students the opportunity to pursue some of their personal interests during those summer months. So thank you again, and at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Stanfield. So if you guys okay, I have a couple of questions. Not actually a question, because you addressed, but I was taking notes as you were talking, so I'll just repeat, and you can, you can comment if you want. So number one is, how do we measure the success of these courses that we offer during the summer? And I think maybe you can do some data analysis on that and see how many students take part, how do they, you know, perform, and all that stuff. Which were high-demand and low-demand courses, which you already went through that? Were there any classes that would allow them college credits? So that's something, you know, I would look into and see how they perform versus the other. How can we avoid outage so that parents and students don't miss the opportunity? And you address about, you know, meeting with the admin tomorrow and talk about the communication, so that's awesome. What was the reason behind the decline compared to 2017, and how can we improve that moving forward? So that's something, if you can look into that, would be nice. And are there any particular demands of courses that you hear, or is it just, you know, a general feeling that, okay, you know, they pretty much go with what we offer? So that's, that's all from me.
So we do, through that client survey, we were able to see a lot of interest on various courses and suggestions made by our families, and so we, I shared that with all of our curriculum coordinators and then all of our site administrators. And then some of them also, we've looked at how we may be able to embed in camps. So for example, yoga came up several times as an area of interest for a possible course. So we're currently researching the opportunity around perhaps offering an afternoon, like art and yoga course in all of our K-5 schools. And so, you know, we kind of look at what makes the most sense for summer school in the morning versus summer camps in the afternoons, and we then also couple that, you know, we look at also the enrollment numbers to see, are there courses that maybe we need to take off the books and look at new ones?
Thank you.
Has there been much research, or have you delved into sort of identifying what motivates different students at different levels to take part in summer school? Does that go into the planning? And if you could just talk about what you guys have identified, if anything, in that area?
Right. We certainly have students who are attending who are recommended for remedial programming based on certain indicators, but then we also have students that it's just enrichment. At the high school level specifically, we have a lot of students that want to get some of those electives out of the way in the summer months. And then we also have those students who were unsuccessful during the year that take those courses. So it is, I don't know the exact mix, and, you know, we have a lot of families who also, once we went into the afternoon camps and being able to offer that all-day experience K-5, a lot of families are opting for Parkway Summer Programming those three weeks, as opposed to paying for childcare or daycare or another outside camp.
Certainly considering it.
Just a quick question. On the jumpstart programs, are we able to take care of or look at any of the screenings that we do for, for kids around reading or the dyslexia screenings during those jumpstart programs, where those kind of have to start once they start their regular school year?
That is a very good question. I do know that, I'm going to write it down before I forget. I do know that our kindergarten teachers specifically, even if they're not teaching jumpstart to kindergarten, there's a day, most of our schools where our kindergarten teachers come in and they observe students, and they look at some of those formative assessments that our teachers are doing in those jumpstart classes, just to kind of have a better idea of who is going to be coming to them and to be able to plan for that. So it might not be a very, a super formal or standardized, but that seems to be the practice in most of our schools with those jumpstart classes.
Thank you.
There was an issue that surfaced a couple of years ago with Algebra I in high school level, where if a student had failed Algebra I during their freshman year, they could not participate in one of the remedial classes that was supposed to help them. And so I was just wondering if that has been resolved, that students, if there's more of, and I think there were some with reading also, that you had to, if there's been any more work done or progress made on remedial classes for students in situations like that, that they can get the help over the summer so that they can, they can go back to either, you know, taking some of the, get back into the regular you know, taking some of the, get back into the regular scheduled courses that they need to take and get help over the summer. I think it was that they couldn't take like the first semester or the second semester of Algebra over again during the summer, so they had to repeat everything again the following. And so it just seemed like there was this big barrier for students who were struggling in Algebra I in high school to be able to find a course to be able to take to help them to move forward with the following year.
Right, right. We have, I would say, engaged our curriculum coordinators a lot more in the design of our courses for summer school, including at the high school level, and just looking at what are we offering and what makes the most sense based on the needs of our students. And so we were in a meeting earlier this week where we did talk about Algebra I just as a whole, and so what happens towards the end of the year, and what can we, you know, what can we deploy as interventions during the year, and then when can we use, how can we use that summer time to make that happen? And so, you know, I think that that is absolutely something we're looking at, is how to, especially for those high school students with those credit-bearing courses, how do we look at summer as more of a third semester for them to either, you know, gain skill to be prepared for the next year, or to build skill where maybe it's lacking?
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
I'm good. I just want to compliment you, your leadership, and that of all the administrators and everyone involved in the summer program. It's amazing where it has come over the years. And just what you've told us tonight in terms of areas that were some deficits or some issues that needed to be worked on, you're actively doing that and making those changes. It's a complicated, complicated program, but it appears that students benefit tremendously from it. The quality of the program, the services is excellent, and it's just great to see. I remember the days that we offered a variety of courses at Parkway in the summertime, and said, "We just have to offer a summer program, so let's do it." But now it's a very important part of a child's education in Parkway, and obviously students take advantage of it, and so do parents. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I can't follow that with anything better, so, thank you.
Jennifer, could you talk a little bit more maybe about some of the camp programs or the extended date? You know, how, why that's growing and then how you're working with Community Ed too a little bit?
Yes, yes. So we continue to look at ways that we can increase. So one of the things that we were able to offer is chess camp, which the chess program's very prominent throughout the year, and so there's a lot of demand. And that's a traveling camp. So what that means is that in one week at our elementary schools, we may have the two camps plus chess, but then the next two, we just have the two camps. And so then that's 25 kids that maybe would have been in those camps. And so we are currently looking at a minimum of how to offer at least three camps a week at every elementary site, because we do believe we have the demand for that. And in working with Mike and Kelly from Parkway Rockwood Community Ed, we are looking for ways to partner with them versus starting from scratch and doing those things on our own. And so we spend a lot of time looking at that data, they look at their data, we spend lots of time in meetings to just try and figure out what our families will appreciate and enjoy in those ways. And then we really tried to be creative in moving those camps, so that there's a different camp every week, just to offer some of our students variety. Although some attend all of them, some just attend, you know, the one week that's of high interest to them.
I appreciate the work on that as a person who is in a two-working parent household. I know summer is so stressful for those households in terms of how the heck. Do you, I mean, people just, you feel guilty, right? Because you're trying to piece together something meaningful for your kid, but, so I think the more we can do to help those families, and I mean, you're doing a lot, is definitely appreciated by the families more than perhaps you hear.
Definitely. And we still do have some, you know, issues with capacity, where, you know, in some of our situations, we can't accommodate all that are interested, but we sure try and, you know, take care of all of the students who are interested. And then, you know, we're consistently looking at where can we add, you know, to support those, to support those families.
You know, if you just really, you know, digest all the things that Jennifer talked about, I mean, there's many facets to the summer program. She talked about the third semester concept, which I think is, by the way, if you have vision, I would, I would like to see where, for high school kids in particular, that's a great opportunity for more credit opportunities. But then you talk about family needs, you talk about students who really need that enrichment in the summertime, and we're trying to provide that. So I mean, we're trying, many facets, but, you know, there's ongoing debate about year-round school. And that's not going well for a lot of reasons. Finances and, you know, the public kind of pushback. But if you think about what we're doing here, I think we're almost there in terms of providing opportunities year-round, and if people want to take advantage of it. And then it's a new, really a new opportunity for children to try things. You know, it's kind of taking some risks, maybe trying some things without worrying about grades and, you know, just having fun with peers. And, you know, education can be fun, and why not, you know, have some of those opportunities, especially the camps and those extended, extended opportunities? So it's many facets, and I think Jennifer and the people that she's working with and administrators are really trying to offer a lot of pieces, kind of moving targets and make it all work, and provide more and more opportunities and try to think about our future. So, really appreciate the work that we're doing in that area. And I think comparatively to other surrounding districts, we really do have a wonderful program. It's not just remedial. When I tell people sometimes that we have thousands of kids in summer school, they say, "What's wrong with Parkway? We got all these kids." Because it's the old mentality that we got, you know, they must be taking summer school because they have to. No, no, they're there because they, they want to. They want to enjoy some opportunities.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next scheduled, next anticipated closed session will be held on Wednesday, November 14th at 6:30 PM at Parkway's Administrative Center. Details of the closed session will be posted within 24 hours of the anticipated meeting. Now may I have a motion in a second to adjourn the regular meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0. Thank you all for your attendance tonight.